Oh say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh say does that star spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I feel I'm going to cry soon, but I'm not afraid to cry. 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 I'm not afraid to cry.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Eternal Father, we gather this afternoon in this august place.
...they made for us. Bendis et se sianna familia mentres innanae sia. Ni timamactus ne veginaisa, zan agredisidzo na dispetu. Ni ni manauta Guahan. Valareso ma continua man lala gin mahasunia agredisidzo na talta gui. Ma yasigugurasia, na ti en fanmalefa ni mastaculo na uttimona sacrificial. Ni mapatinas para hamin. Engagago esti gin na sezu cristo ilahimo den signa momi. Ni lalalazza mangabebena zen hagu. Zani spiritu santo unzuus para todo i tempo. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Please be seated. Buenos, than half a day. Since World War II, thousands of men and women from Guam have served in the armed forces in defense of the island and the nation. Some paying the ultimate sacrifice and never returning home to their loved ones. In honor of our fallen soldiers who lost their lives in battle, whether from World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, Operation Desert Storm, Operation Iraqi Freedom, and Operation Enduring Freedom, the 30th Guam Legislature passed Bill 407-30. Authored by Senator Vicente Cabrera Pangolinen and co-sponsored by myself and Senator Tina Munier Barnes. The bill is now public law 30-193 and mandates the designation of Imlazen, Imastaculo, na sacrificial, the medal of the ultimate sacrifice to family members of our island's brave soldiers killed in action. In January of 2012, representatives from various veterans organizations, the Guam Veterans Affairs Office, and the Guam National Guard met to begin the planning stages for design and presentation of the medal. An island-wide art contest was held for all of Guam's students from grades kindergarten through 12 for the submission of artwork to be used in the final design of the medal. With an overwhelming response of over 900 students submitting entries and with the assistance of our judges, veteran Frank Shimizu, Alan Van Aken and his wife Terri Van Aken, veteran Johnny Atulay Titano and his wife Bobby Titano. The entry submitted by Angelica Gomez, a third-grade student at Santa Barbara Catholic School, was selected as the first-place winner. Angelica's artwork is now the design centerpiece for this prestigious medal we are presenting today. Congratulations, Angelica. On behalf of all the members of Ilehas Lutuan Guahan, undankulu na sitiuus maasi to all the teachers and parents of our island's schoolchildren who initiated and encouraged your students and children to participate in the design of this symbolic medal. Thank you, students, for your participation and hard work. Today, we honor and recognize the families of our island's fallen soldiers. With over 150 recipients for Imlazen, Imastaculo, na sacrificial, this is only the first ceremony of a series of presentations to honor these soldiers and family members. Today, we present 30 of these medals along with a legislative resolution and a Guam flag that will be presented to the spouse, child, grandchild, or parent of the honorees pursuant to public law 30-193. And now, to assist in the presentation. Ilehas Lutuan Guahan calls upon the Honorable Eddie Basakauville, Governor of Guam, Colonel Daron Cruz representing Major General Benny Pollino, Adjutant General, Guam National Guard, Rear Admiral Tillman Payne, Commander, Joint Region, Marianas, Colonel Scott Locke, Commander, Marine Forces, Pacific. I also ask that the leadership of the 31st Guam Legislature take your places as we call upon the family members of our fallen heroes to receive Imlazen, Imastaculo, na sacrificial.
Private Pedro Leguanyer Ugin, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his sisters, Rafina Ugin and Rosario Antilon. Corporal Francisco Garrido Javier, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor is his nephew, Francis Munoz. Sergeant Francisco Mantonotia Asenoma, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor is his sister Maria Pollino. On behalf of his son, Benny Francisco Titegui Asenoma. Sergeant Mark Frederick Biagini, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor is his daughter, Michelle Perez.
From the village of Porta, Mark was the only child of Sir Ficia Solis Biagini of Tomas Blas. He attended George Washington High School and enjoyed baseball, cards, and frequenting the race track. He is survived by his daughter, Michelle Perez, and two granddaughters, Kristen Nicole and Michelle Louise.
Specialist 5 Anthony Martin Mendiola Blas, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his brothers, Jesse and Ramon Blas.
Anthony was born to Ramon and Antonio Blas of Zautnia and was one of eight children. He attended George Washington and Industry Illinois High Schools before joining the Army. Anthony was known in his village for his skills in baseball and basketball.
Staff Sergeant Enrique Solis Cruz, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor is his sister, Aines Kinata.
Enrique is born to Luisa S. and Juan C. Cruz of Santa Rita. He is one of 14 children.
Corporal Frederico Villagomez Dela Cruz, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his sisters, Lucy Pangolinen and Bernie Borja. Sergeant Benny San Nicholas Flores, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor is his daughter Cathy Flores.
Benny San Nicholas Flores was born to Jose Duñez Flores and Rafaela Luján Flores from the village of Inalahan. Graduated from George Washington High School, and he is one of 12 siblings.
Sergeant David John Funes, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor is his son, David C. Funes. Specialist 4 David Atuegui Gorton, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor and on behalf of his daughter Jackie Ballenger is his aunt Magdalena Atuegui. Specialist 4 Jesus Rosa Mariano, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his sisters, Maria Lourdes Mariano and Regina Blas.
Born in 1945, Jesus was the only son of the late Vicente F. Mariano and Aggera R. Mariano. He is a brother to four sisters. Jesus was raised in Maynilao when he joined the Army shortly after graduating from high school. He was a member of the 101st Airborne Division, the Screaming Eagles, in Vietnam. Jesus Mariano was the first casualty from Guam whose life was claimed in the Vietnam conflict in 1965.
Specialist 4 Robert Leon Guerrero Mendiola, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his sister Mary Mendiola Pinotia and brother Francisco LG Mendiola.
Robert Leon Guerrero Mendiola is from Baragada. He was born to Jose B. and Magdalena Leon Guerrero Mendiola and is the youngest of six children. Robert joined the Army when he was 19 years old. He is now survived by his sister Mary and his brother Francisco. He is now survived by his sister Mary and his brother Francisco.
Sergeant Albert Barsinus Doyle, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his mother Francesca B. Doyle and his brother John Doyle. Sergeant First Class Vicente Duennas Perez, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor is his brother Peter Duennas San Augustine.
Originally from Mongong, Victor was the son of Grace Duennas San Augustine and Juan R. San Augustine. He attended George Washington High School before joining the Army.
Specialist Four Victor Folino San Nicholas, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his sisters Josephine SN Williams and his brother Joseph P. San Nicholas.
Born to Jose Luhon San Nicholas and Josefina Folino San Nicholas, Victor was from Inalahan and was raised on a farm with four sisters and eight brothers. He enjoyed track and field and pasturing the animals at his family's farm. Prior to being drafted in the Army, he worked at Naval Station as a teacher's aide.
Sergeant Enrique Rosario Santos, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his sister Elizabeth Santos Kinata and his brother Alvin Santos.
Enrique was born to Enrique M. and Carmen San Nicholas Santos and was originally from Sanahania. He is the second of seven children, four brothers, two sisters. Enrique enjoyed fishing with his father and farming at his family ranch in Menengun. He attended George Washington High School.
Specialist Four James Edward Anderson Santos, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor and on behalf of his wife June S. Gula is his sister-in-law Doris B. Sanchez and his aunt Patricia C. Santos.
James was known by his friends and family for being a loving, respectful young man. He is survived by his siblings and numerous relatives across the island and abroad.
Sergeant Jesse Joel Jesus Castro, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his wife Teresa Castro, his son Jesse Junior, and his mother Dorteia Jesus.
Jesse was known by his loved ones for his sense of humor and his never-ending desire to help others. Jesse is survived by his wife Teresa, his son Jesse Junior, his mother Dorteia, his sister Lisa, and his brother Fred.
Sergeant Christopher James Sepeda Fernandez, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his parents Joseph M. and Maria C. Fernandez.
Christopher is from Zautnia and is lovingly remembered by his friends and family across the island.
Sergeant Gregory Duennas Ferran, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his wife Deborah C. Ferran and his son Calico Ferran.
Fondly known as Greg, the loving son of Gregorio Perez Ferran and Rose Duennas Cruz was from Maynilao. Greg is fondly remembered by his wife Deborah Sepeda Ferran and their children Shiree and Calico.
Sergeant Brian Steven Leon Guerrero, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his wife Emily G. Leon Guerrero and his son Jude Steven G. Leon Guerrero.
Brian is fondly known as LG and is remembered in the hearts of his children Jude, Carl, Kerian, Brian, Julian, and Meili. His parents are Rosita Leon Guerrero Pangolinan and Pedro de Leon Guerrero Pangolinan and the late Gil C. Luhon. Brian was raised in Saipan until he moved to Guam to attend the Guam Community College before he joined the Guam Army National Guard.
Sergeant Joshua Akoni Lukela, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor and on behalf of his wife Denise are his parents Anthony and Dorothy Lukela.
Born to Dorothy and Anthony Lukela, Josh was known for his lifelong dream of continuing the legacy of the men in his family to join the military one day. He graduated from Simon Sanchez High School where he was known for his love of football, cars, and playing the ukulele. He married his high school sweetheart Denise and they soon gave birth to their daughter Maya. He is lovingly remembered by his only brother Anthony.
Sergeant Sampson Augusto Mora, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor is his brother Abraham Mora.
From the village of Dedodo, Sampson was born to Abraham C. and Angelina C. Mora. He is the youngest of four children, almost all of whom have joined the military. He graduated from Simon Sanchez High School and attended the University of Guam before joining the Guam Army National Guard. He was known among his friends and family as a car enthusiast and as an avid runner with the Guam Running Club.
Specialist Richard Junior De Gracia Napati, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor is his wife Brienne Napati.
Born to Richard and Elaine Napati of Talafofu in 1981, Richard was one of five children. He graduated from Southern High School with a class of 1999 before enlisting in the Army. Richard was known for his skills in baseball, cockfighting, and barbecuing with friends and family. Richard is lovingly remembered by his grandmother Rosa De Gracia as well as numerous friends and family.
Major Henry San Nicholas Offishar, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his mother Agnes San Nicholas Rillerra and his stepfather Leonard Rillerra.
Born to Pedro Garcia Offishar and Agnes San Nicholas Rillerra, he's the oldest of seven children and is from the village of Talafofu. He attended John F. Kennedy High School. He's a graduate from the University of Guam and Syracuse University in New York. He is lovingly survived by his nephew Leonard Offishar. He enjoyed taking the time to mentor youth and young adults.
Sergeant Yasiwo Euro, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his parents Mr. and Mrs. Isashi and Iosita Euro.
Born in Chuk State, Yasiwo was raised in the Ganya Heights. He graduated from George Washington High School and enlisted in the Army after graduation. Yasiwo enjoyed playing football and was very active in his community. He's known for helping his village mayor with numerous projects. Yasiwo has two sisters and four brothers.
Specialist Roy Tidinko Demian Junior, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor is his daughter Pauline Ugin.
Roy Demian is from the village of Totu and he is one of four children. He attended George Washington High School.
Staff Sergeant David Guerrero Beneventi, United States Marine Corps. Here to receive the medal in his honor is his sister, Sister Oliva Beneventi.
David Guerrero Beneventi is from the village of Dedodo. He was best known for his dream to travel the world. David Beneventi attended Father Duennas Memorial High School and joined the Marine Corps in his junior year of high school. After advanced training with the Marines, David was assigned to the USS Franklin D. Roosevelt and was able to travel the world.
Sergeant Vicenti Tetphago Espinosa, United States Marine Corps. Here to receive the medal in his honor is his sister Doris Manibusen.
Vicenti was the third child born in Meleso to Anna T. and Pedro C. Espinosa. Vicenti loved the outdoors and was very involved with the Mount Carmel Parish. He was an altar server and a knight of the altar for the church. After graduating from Vo-Tec, Vicenti was drafted to the Marines where he served as an assistant to the chaplain in the combat zone. Vicenti Espinosa served three tours in Vietnam.
Native Seaman Second Class Jose Meno Meno, United States Navy. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his grandchildren Dolores Soriano and Francisco Napati.
Jose Meno is from the village of Meleso.
Native Seaman Second Class Pedro T. Sablon, United States Navy. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his nieces Emma L. Ugin and Lola P. Sablon.
Pedro Sablon was one of eleven children. He was raised in the Ganya Heights and in Santa Cruz, Higatna. Pedro graduated from George Washington High School before he enlisted in the Guam Insular Force Guard before World War II. He later assisted US forces in locating Japanese hideouts. He is survived by his daughter Basita Ugin, who is represented by her cousins Emma and Lola here with us today.
Corporal Frederico Villagomez Delacruz, United States Army. Here to receive the medal in his honor are his sisters Lucy Pangolinan and Bernie Borja.
So at this time then I'd like to ask the Governor if he can join me then in unveiling the honor roll list and then based on pursuant of course to the public law is that this plaque will be placed in the legislature and hopefully in the original legislative building. We'll find a nice place to place it. So Governor then? So I'm going to ask if one can go ahead and take their seat as Selena reads the name of all of the individuals on this roll. Thank you.
Steward's mate Third Class Vicenti Regis Echfaji, United States Navy, World War II. Steward's mate First Class Inocenshu San Miguel Afflagui, United States Navy, World War II. Steward's mate Third Class Felix Taykenku Agighi, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant First Class Gregorio San Nicholas Ugin, United States Navy, World War II. Seaman Second Class Pedro Iriati Ugin, United States Navy, World War II. Cook Second Class Francisco Nicolás Francisco Blas, United States Navy, World War II. Native Coxman Vicenti Camachu Blas, United States Navy, World War II. Steward Third Class Adriano Castro Borja, United States Navy, World War II. Seaman Second Class Jose Santos Camachu, United States Navy, World War II. Officers Steward Third Class Felix Rosario Castro, United States Navy, World War II. Seaman Second Class Juan Sablon Sepeda, United States Navy, World War II. Machinists Mate Third Class Vicenti Echfaji Zampaku, United States Navy, World War II. Steward's mate Third Class Arthur Benedict Luhon Charfarus, United States Navy, World War II. Native Seaman Second Class Francisco Nedodok Charfarus, United States Navy, World War II. Native Seaman Second Class Vicenti Cruz Chargulov, United States Navy, World War II. Seaman First Class Jose Cruz Concepcion, United States Navy, World War II. Native Seaman Second Class Jesus Cruz Cruz, United States Navy, World War II. Chief Cook Airman Apprentice Jose Santos Cruz, United States Navy, World War II. Steward's mate Second Class Vicenti Agualo Cruz, United States Navy, World War II. Steward's mate Second Class Joaquin Manibusen Diaz, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant First Class Ignashu Camachu Farthen, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant Second Class Nicolás San Nicholas Feggerger, United States Navy, World War II. Native Seaman Second Class Antonio Salas Fereng, United States Navy, World War II. Native Seaman Second Class Francisco Manibusen Fereng, United States Navy, World War II. Native Seaman Second Class Angel Leon Guerrero Flores, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant Second Class Jose San Nicholas Flores, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant Second Class Jesus Francisco Garcia, United States Navy, World War II. Cook First Class Enrique Blas Garrido, United States Navy, World War II. Cook Third Class Victoriano Borja Garrido, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant Second Class Julio Mendiola Guzman, United States Navy, World War II. Native Seaman Second Class Enrique Murfalan Ignashu, United States Navy, World War II. Steward Second Class Jesus Cruz Leon Guerrero, United States Navy, World War II. Steward Third Class Simon Flores Lizama, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant First Class Andres Francis Muffness, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant Second Class Francisco Regis Muffness, United States Navy, World War II. Steward Third Class Jesus Chargulov Manalisai, United States Navy, World War II. Officers Steward Third Class Jesus Leguatnia Manibusen, United States Navy, World War II. Storekeeper Third Class Juan Chargulov Manibusen, United States Navy, World War II. Cook Third Class Gabriel Magwaduk Mansapit, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant First Class Jesus Manalisai Mata, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant First Class Enrique Castro Mendiola, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant Second Class Francisco Ninaisen Mendiola, United States Navy, World War II. Native Seaman Second Class Pedro Palomo Mendiola, United States Navy, World War II. Native Seaman Second Class Jose Meno Meno, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant Second Class Vicenti Gogui Meno, United States Navy, World War II. Native Seaman Second Class Pedro Kiritai Nauta, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant Second Class Jose Sanchez Kinata, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant First Class Guillermo Leon Guerrero Kitano, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant Second Class Francisco Umpinku Rivera, United States Navy, World War II. Native Seaman Second Class Pedro T. Sablon, United States Navy, World War II. Native Seaman Second Class Vicenti Santos Sablon, United States Navy, World War II. Metalsmith Third Class Joaquin Kitugua Santos, United States Navy, World War II. Steward Second Class Jose Chargulov Santos, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant Second Class Jesus Cruz Tayanao, United States Navy, World War II. Cook Third Class Joaquin Jesus Taymanglu, United States Navy, World War II. Mess attendant Second Class Ramon Rosario Tayteno, United States Navy, World War II. Steward Second Class Louis San Nicolás Tenorio, United States Navy, World War II. Steward's mate Third Class Frank Ellis Tolvis, United States Navy, World War II. Private First Class Jesus Taykenku Agighi, United States Army, Korean War. Private Pedro Leguatnia Ugin, United States Army, Korean War. Corporal Jesus Alvarez Camachu, United States Army, Korean War. Private Ignashu Castro Castro, United States Army, Korean War. Private First Class Amadeo Artemio Cruz, United States Army, Korean War. Corporal Francisco Garrido Javier, United States Army, Korean War. Private First Class Jose Guerrero Leon Guerrero, United States Army, Korean War. Private Gonzalo Mendiola Pablo, United States Army, Korean War. Corporal Jose Ugin Kinata, United States Army, Korean War. Private First Class Jose Pereira Sablon, United States Army, Korean War. Private Gregorio Blas Salas, United States Army, Korean War. Private First Class Joaquin Salas Santos, United States Army, Korean War. Private First Class Jesus Cruz Seguenza, United States Army, Korean War. Sergeant Jose Kinata Ugin, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant Francisco Mantanonia Asanoma, United States Army, Vietnam. Staff Sergeant David Guerrero Beneventi, United States Marine Corps, Vietnam. Sergeant Mark Frederick Biagini, United States Army, Vietnam. Specialist Five Anthony Martin Mendiola Blas, United States Army, Vietnam. Specialist Five Anthony Martin Mendiola Blas, United States Army, Vietnam. Lance Corporal James Luján Blas, United States Marine Corps, Vietnam. Staff Sergeant Juan Santos Borja, United States Army, Vietnam. Staff Sergeant Joaquin Palacios Cabrera, United States Army, Vietnam. Staff Sergeant David Bitanga Camacho, United States Army, Vietnam. Private First Class Donald Sumunglit Carter, United States Army, Vietnam. Staff Sergeant Juan Pasqual Rosario Castro, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant Juan Dueñas Cepeda, United States Army, Vietnam. Engineman Second Class Edward Cruz Cruz, United States Navy, Vietnam. Staff Sergeant Enrique Salas Cruz, United States Army, Vietnam. Private First Class Joseph Agighi Cruz, United States Marine Corps, Vietnam. Specialist Four Joseph William Cruz, United States Army, Vietnam. Staff Sergeant Pedro Affligui Cruz, United States Army, Vietnam. Private First Class Ronald Perez Quasito, United States Marine Corps, Vietnam. Lance Corporal Alan James Demian, United States Marine Corps, Vietnam. Private First Class Herman Borja De Leon, United States Army, Vietnam. Corporal Frederico Villagomez de la Cruz, United States Army, Vietnam. Specialist Five Edward Regis Diaz, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant Albert Barcines Doyle, United States Army, Vietnam. Staff Sergeant Jose Bamba Dueñas, United States Army, Vietnam. Staff Sergeant Juan Leon Guerrero Dueñas, United States Army, Vietnam. Corporal Rudy Ediger Ei, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant Juanito Maquez Escano, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant Vicente Tetbajagu Espinoza, United States Marine Corps, Vietnam. Sergeant Fernando Barcines Estévez, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant Joseph Martin Istakyo, United States Army, Vietnam. Specialist Four Harold James Finney Jr., United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant Benny San Nicolás Flores, United States Army, Vietnam. Specialist Four David Cruz Flores, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant David John Funes, United States Army, Vietnam. Specialist Four David Attoigui Gorton, United States, Vietnam. United States Army. Corporal Vincent Feja Guerrero, United States Army, Vietnam.
Private First Class Jose Babalta Herrera, United States Army, Vietnam. Specialist Four Jesus Rosa Mariano, United States Army, Vietnam. Specialist Four Robert Leon Guerrero Mendiola, United States Army, Vietnam. Private First Class Jesus Kineni Meno, United States Army, Vietnam. Specialist Four Tomas Regis Mesa, United States Army, Vietnam. Corporal Vincent Penaula Morham, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant Emilio Ninaisen Nededog, United States Army, Vietnam. Corporal Gregorio Lizama Pangolinan, United States Army, Vietnam. Staff Sergeant Pedro Cabrera Pangolinan, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant Henry Pangolinan Pareda, United States Army, Vietnam. Specialist Four John Anthony Perez, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant First Class Vicente Dueñas Perez, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant Johnny Cruz Kanga, United States Army, Vietnam. Specialist Four Jesus Ikanino Kiritait, United States Army, Vietnam. Staff Sergeant Tomas Garcia Regis, United States Army, Vietnam. Specialist Four Eugene Raymond Ripple, United States Army, Vietnam. Specialist Four Thomas Salas Rivera, United States Army, Vietnam. Private First Class Lucas Herrera Rodriguez, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant First Class Antonio Kitutut Sablon, United States Army, Vietnam. Lance Corporal Ignatju Espinoza Sablon, United States Marine Corps, Vietnam. Private First Class John Tenorio Sablon, United States Army, Vietnam. Staff Sergeant Thomas Kitutut Sablon, United States Army, Vietnam. Lance Corporal Ruffo Santos San Nicolás, United States Marine Corps, Vietnam. Specialist Four Victor Paulino San Nicolás, United States Army, Vietnam. Corporal George Santiago Sanchez, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant Enrique Rosario Santos, United States Army, Vietnam. Private First Class Ernest Pablo Santos, United States Army, Vietnam. Cook Second Class Filomeno Santos, United States Navy, World War II. Specialist Four James Edward Anderson Santos, United States Army, Vietnam. Staff Sergeant Rafael Salas Santos, United States Army, Vietnam. Specialist Four Johnny Salas Taytigui, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant Francis San Nicolás Torre, United States Marine Corps, Vietnam. Specialist Four Perichardo Jose Taytingfong Torres, United States Army, Vietnam. Private Jesus Iriarte Tovis, United States Army, Korean War. Corporal James Edward Violet, United States Marine Corps, Vietnam. Private First Class Rafael Scambaluri Yakoy, United States Army, Vietnam. Sergeant Jesse Joel Jesus Castro, United States Army, Operation Iraqi Freedom. Specialist Casper Allen Kamatsu Duckwitz, United States Army, Operation Iraqi Freedom, Enduring Freedom. Specialist Gregory Dueñas Faherin, United States Army, Operation Enduring Freedom. Sergeant Christopher James Cepeda Fernandez, United States Army, Operation Enduring Freedom. Specialist John Derek Flores, United States Army, Operation Iraqi Freedom. Staff Sergeant Joseph Dueñas Gamboa, United States Army, Operation Iraqi Freedom. Sergeant Brian Stephen Leon Guerrero, United States Army, Operation Enduring Freedom. Sergeant Joshua Akoni Lukiala, United States Army, Operation Enduring Freedom. Sergeant Sampson Augustu Mora, United States Army, Operation Enduring Freedom. Specialist Richard De Gracia Napulti, United States Army, Operation Iraqi Freedom. Major Henry San Nicolás Offishore, United States Army, Operation Enduring Freedom. Private First Class Jaseen Pilar Sungeng Petri, United States Army, Operation Enduring Freedom. Sergeant Isivo Urro, United States Army, Operation Iraqi Freedom. Sergeant Jose San Nicolás Crisostamo, United States Army, Operation Enduring Freedom. Specialist Roy Taydinku Demian Jr., United States Army, Operation Desert Storm.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call upon Reverend Albert Alquero, President of the Guam Ministry of Association, to give the benediction.
May we bow our heads please? And let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, as we come to close, we end by expressing our thankfulness to you for our island's fallen heroes, service members who paid ultimate price defending our nation and their freedom and joy. I pray that you continue to help their families through the season of loss, grief, and coping. We reach out to you, the Father of compassion and the source of every comfort, asking you to touch them with your unfailing love and kindness. We ask you that you be their God who comforts them through their struggles and bring them through the tough times. We ask that you come alongside them in their pains and strengthen them so they'll one day be able to help others who may face the same struggles. May they sense your presence in their hearts of need, that when they're hurting, help them find their joy in you. For it's your joy that will be their strength. Help them to trust you as their God of hope. Fill them with your peace and hope by the power of the Holy Spirit. Although no amount of words or action can ever express our gratefulness, we pray that this humble ceremony helps in some way to convey our unending and never-to-forgotten gratitude and great respect to the island's heroes and to their families from the people of Guam. I ask the Lord that you will continue to bless them, that you will keep them, that your face will continue to shine upon them, that you will be gracious to them, that you will lift up your countenance upon them and give them peace. Now I ask, Lord, that your grace and the love of God and the communion of the Holy Spirit be with us all and forever. In the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Senator Esposito and a motion?
Thank you very much Madam Speaker. I move that we rise from this committee of hold and that we adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
Hearing no objections, so order. I'd like to have all of you still remain standing as the caller guards come in to retire the colors. I'd like to ask the Governor to join me in the recessional, the members of the legislature, the military officials, family members, and others in the session hall.